Good evening and welcome to a political forum. It's a joint forum with W A T D and Area 58 Cable. I'm your moderator Christine James. Joining me from W A T D is Charles Mathewson. And we're using a more conversational format tonight with no real strict limit on the length of answers. However, as moderator, I reserve the right if you're rambling, repeating yourself or not getting to the point, I do reserve that right to hurry you along. Sometimes that involves the bell. All candidates will give an opening and closing statement of around two minutes. And we're pretty strict about enforcing that, but people have good things to say. We've got two races tonight we're going to focus on. First up is the Select Board. There are three candidates for two seats, but the incumbent, James Hoffman, is not here tonight. So we've got Dan Farini and Daniel Ryan. Thanks so much for joining us tonight, gentlemen. So we're going to start on this side because it's the easiest way to do it. Dan Farini, your opening statement, try to keep it to about two minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Dan Farini, and I'm running for the Select Board for the town of Carver. I am a longtime resident of Carver and part of this community for over 40 years. Shortly after marrying my bride, Donna, 45 years ago, I proudly served in the Vietnam era as Navy. Upon returning home from overseas, I put myself through college, have an electrical engineering degree and a master's degree in business. I have never had any thoughts about politics until about two years ago, when I received a little postcard where I assumed it was just another solar array going up in the neighborhood. And the more I looked at it, the more I learned it was different. It was about a battery farm. That got me interested. I started to question what was going in the neighborhood. The more I questioned, the more I was belittled by certain politicians in town. I was berated and not allowed to speak in various meetings. So I have decided to step up and be the voice of the people. I've sat through a lot of meetings where townspeople were not allowed to speak. So that's why I'm coming up. I want to be the voice of the people. I want to step forward. I want the little person like myself to be heard going forward. And as change, change comes from the top, and that's why I'm running for Selectman, because I have tried to make changes from the outside. Also, two years ago, when I found out about this, I also started, became a core member of Carver Concerned Citizens. You've seen a lot of our posts. We're a group in town who is taking notice of what is going on, and we're trying to bring that to light to many of the people in town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the opening statement from Dan Farini. Now our opening statement from Daniel Ryan.
Hi, my name is Daniel Ryan, and I'm running for one of the two open positions on the Select Board. I've lived in Carver for over 50 years, and my wife and I raised our family here. My two daughters graduated from Carver Middle High School. I enjoy giving back to the community and using my experience to work with others to solve problems and plan for our future. I do have past town government experience before my children were born. I did serve as the Finance Committee Chairman for about six years in town. And then after that, I was elected to the Board of Selectmen where I also served as a chairman. I served on several town building committees and as chairman of one of those projects. And I also was the chairman of the Village Green Committee that built the gazebo in town and the Town Building Study Committee. I think in all of these examples, I worked very well with others. I listened closely to others, and I worked very hard to successfully complete the projects that I did in town. In one of, in all of these examples, I always tried to do what's best for Carver and what's best for the citizens. I also coached youth sports when my daughters were in school, and I served as the Carver Middle High School Robotics Club advisor for about 10 years. One of my major accomplishments for the town was working with others to come up with a plan for four of the building projects so we didn't have to raise taxes. So working well with others, we, originally I did the town hall in the library. From my experience on the Finance Committee, I was able to find funds so that we did not have to raise taxes to do both of those building projects. And then several years ago, we were faced with the elementary school, the police station, and the fire station. And I worked closely with all the citizens in town to be able to come up with a plan so that we did not have to raise taxes or we enabled the plan not to have to raise taxes for the police station and the fire station. So the only project that we had to raise the taxes was for the elementary school. I always listen to everyone. I try to incorporate everyone's suggestions whenever possible. And I'm running because I like to use my experience to continue to help everyone in town with the challenges that we face as we move forward.
Thank you. That was the opening statement with Daniel Ryan. Charles Mathewson, questions for the candidates?
Because it can be a little more conversational tonight, let's start a conversation about the battery. Cranberry Point, and because we've already heard from Dan, Daniel, how do you approach the Cranberry Point project?
So I've, what I'm hearing in town is that the batteries would be installed at a substation, and the permits were granted, from what I understand. And I also understand that the state has also supported the project. At this point, you know, I know citizens are concerned about safety. I mean, we all know that lithium batteries have this, lots of stories in the news, and you know, they can, you know, they, they can catch fire, and they're, they're very difficult to put out. So I know citizens are also questioning the approval process, which resulted in the permits. I'm not exactly sure what transpired, but I know that, you know, somehow this went through an approval process. But, so I think as member of the Select Board and in working with other town officials, we have to make sure that the safety and the health of our town citizens is one of our top priorities. So there are articles at town meeting coming up starting tomorrow. And I did notice that Article 28, I read through that in pretty good detail. It's very comprehensive. It's a 10-page article that talks about safety and, you know, and decommissioning of the batteries, and what happens if the batteries aren't working, and things like that. I do have some suggestions for town meeting tomorrow that I'll probably make on that article. And then there is another citizens petition article that's in there too. So that both of those articles are going to be talked about at town meeting. And so I'm, you know, interested in participating in that process.
And when you say citizens, you're referring to the, the organized group?
Yes.
Yeah, not just voted in general?
Well, there was a, there was a moratorium committee that was put in place, you know, to study the situation and come up with a set of bylaws to regulate, you know, what's happening. And then there was a citizens group that also put together an article to, or a set of articles to, to address the storage.
And Dan, you, you, why are you objecting to this?
Okay. Couple points. It's being put in the worst place in town. It's being put in the most populated area in town. Most of the residents that, even myself, it's 1,500 feet from my house, most of the residents had nothing to say, or we were misinformed during the town meeting when it was voted in. There's some really, it's 100, going to be 180 megawatt facility. Design has recently changed again, where they're changing the battery structures to the mega pack to the mega pack two, which is going to be a more dense battery combination. This has been going on for five years now. Their permits have expired, should have expired as of this month. I have spoke before the E F S, which is the State Board concerning this, voicing my opinion against it. I've also talked to Senator Pacheco privately twice concerning this and got his viewpoints on it, and he's listened to me. The whole thing is Carver is not going to get much from this. We may get a little tax revenue. It will not assist the town at all. Talking to the engineers who are behind this, this battery farm is designed to pull and store energy during the middle of the night when the rates are extremely low. And then during the day when the rates are high, the energy is going to be released back into the system. And therefore, the company who actually owns Cranberry Point will be, this is how they'll be making money off this battery farm, where it will not have anything to do with Carver citizens. The other thing is the dangers involved. We do not have any kind of system in place to warn the citizens of Carver if there's an issue. The elementary school is less than 1,000 feet from this. What happens, it's not when or if, it's if there's an issue, there is no contingency plan in place. Our fire department says they can handle it, but there is other issues. If this thing goes up in flames, how do we get our children out of our schools? Do we get locked into our houses? Do we have to evacuate that area? None of that has been brought up at all. So therefore, I don't think it's really needed in our town. There are a lot of other spaces that it could go to. It could go to the old nuclear power plant, which is set up to handle something like this. But where it's designated is right in the most populated area of Carver, and I think that's wrong. And I think we should have looked at and moved to somewhere else. Lastly, when I did complain about this, when I first spoke out about it, honestly, I was contacted by the folks at Cranberry Point and asked what they could do for me to change my mind. I told Allison, who is a project manager, that they could move it somewhere else, and I would be happy. And that's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
I'm just going to ask you a quick, two quick follow-up questions, and if this seems kind of basic, I just wanted, so people listening at home, just so they can get to it, I'll ask you both the question, same question about the battery storage. What, if any, benefit is there to the town having it? And two, what's the worst possible scenario that can happen if there's a problem? When I hear about battery storage like this, this might have nothing to do with it, I'm just thinking about a few stories we've covered with Teslas on fire. It took literally, especially at a dealership in Norwell, with one car on fire, it took so many firefighters and hours to put out one car fire. So my question to you, Dan Farini, just make sure you get the Dan straight here. What benefit is there for the town, and what's the worst possible scenario in your opinion?
My, my, the benefit from town is we'll get a little bit of tax revenue.
Like, you have any rough idea?
I've been trying to find out, and I haven't been able to find out. Nobody can give me a definite answer what the tax revenue will be based on this.
Okay.
It will be probably based off of the property taxes. As for the worst scenario, what could happen if we have a thermal runaway? There is no putting this out. This is not the size, this is, this battery packs are made by Tesla. So you take that Tesla automobile and take that battery, and it will be a tractor trailer's truck size, 52 feet long, eight feet wide, 10 feet high. We are looking at 80, at least 86 of them being put behind our neighborhoods. If they were to catch on fire, there is no putting this out. The fire department's instructions are let it burn. What they will do is they will use water around it to try to cool the batteries surrounding it. However, if the water does come in contact with the residue from the fire from, from the lithium ion battery, it will float. The worst thing that can come out of all this is our aquifer sits right below this designated area. And if this contamination is to be allowed and seep through our soil and get into the aquifer, it could pollute everyone's well in the town and all surrounding towns that do feed off of our aquifer.
Okay. Dan Ryan, same question. What benefit do we get, and what do you think's the worst possible scenario?
So again, the tax benefit is that the property would be assessed at whatever value it is, and then it would be factored into the tax, taxes that people pay and the businesses pay. And the other, sure, yes, I, you know, one of the things I'm concerned about when I get on, if I get on the board, is to look into, you know, the safety measures that, and be an advocate for making sure that we have the proper safety measures, because I do agree that, you know, you could have a catastrophic fire, you know, and you could cause damage. And we are on the aquifer in town, so all those things do need to be addressed, and we have to make sure there's adequate safety in plan in place. And what I didn't see in the article that I want to make sure gets added is I'd like to see, you know, some periodic inspections of the site too. I think I didn't see that addressed in the article that's coming up tomorrow, so make sure that they, there are inspections, and then they, you know, we can keep up on top of making sure that the safety is there. And also looking at the technology, I'd like to understand a little bit more about the packs, the Tesla packs, and, you know, how they're, how they're, you know, deemed to be safe, you know, and try to understand that too.
As a former Finance Committee Chairman, would this be property tax or personal tax?
It should go under the business, so there should be an assessment as a business tax. And so we have a split tax rate in town, and so what'll happen is the only vehicle that we typically have is the residential and the, and the business taxes. And so it would fall under a business tax.
Because much of the former now nuclear power plant in Plymouth was taxed as personal property.
Okay.
And when Holtech, I believe it was Holtech, or maybe the owner before, got a ruling that it was not personal property, the taxes to Plymouth went way down.
Okay.
So that's an important point to understand if it's personal or property taxes.
Right.
Okay. This relates to the aquifer, which I live in Plymouth, and it is the Plymouth-Carver aquifer. And it's one of the largest in the Northeast, and it's highly valuable, primarily to be left alone. We have a few breweries in Plymouth that take generously from it, but other than that, we don't have a bud plant, and we don't have other, there's no Coca-Cola bottle and company taking from the aquifer. We've been able to, the two towns, to protect it. You mentioned that the Cranberry Point facility would pose a danger. What about earth removal? We're accustomed in Cranberry country here to think of earth removal and cranberries as just a, a natural kind of thing, but it is making a hole in the aquifer every time we mine. Are you concerned with that, Dan?
Yes, I am. My group, Carver Concerned Citizens, has brought a lot of this to light. I want to say this, we're not against the cranberry industry. We have friends who are within the cranberry industry. We have a petition coming up as part of the town meeting tomorrow night. And one of the things we're going to request is that a moratorium be put on sand mining or sand removal. And that's not against the cranberry growers who have to use the sand to, for their bogs, but I'll give you some instances of what's going on in town. If you go down Route 44 heading towards Plymouth, you come to the Plymouth-Carver line, you will see large piles of sand there. That spot was the highest spot in Carver at one time. It was a giant hill. It's been removed for the sand. Out behind Meadow Street, there's been an operation going on for 11 years now. Five of those years have gone on without permits. It was under the guise to put water, a pond for the cranberry bog there. The D E P has come in and looked at that and said the pond that they're putting in is at least 10 to 100 times the size what they need for the, for the water system. It's the remove for the sand. And then if you go down to Furnace Road in South Carver, you will see that the forest has been completely decimated, and they're removing sand. It's, it's all about the sand. My understanding is Carver gets anywhere from 10 to 15 cents per yard. I don't know what the people who are removing it are making. However, when we've gone up before the Earth Removal Committee and discussed this, again, I'll use Meadow Street as an example, that's been going on for 11 years. Most of these individuals who are doing this are from outside the town. And the contractor who's removing the, the material from Meadow Street, when they asked how long it would be, he said it would be anywhere from one to three years, because it depended on the economy and how much money he was going to make from the sand. If the economy stayed strong, he'd remove sand, more sand. If the economy slowed down, he would remove less sand. The problem is, once you remove the sand, you're removing the filter that is below the aquifer. And a lot of these, this has happened throughout the summer. We've had a lot of streets where we have, our wells have gone dry because there's been sand mining, and what happens is they go below the water level, and they start to pump the water out, and therefore, they're pulling, dropping the water level for the people in that area have lost their wells. When we've complained, they've come in and say they'll do wet sanding. Wet sanding is no more than digging into the aquifer and removing wet sand. It's just a little bit hotter for them to do it, but they're still digging into the aquifer. And once, again, if that gets polluted or something happens to that, it's not just Carver. It's, it's every surrounding town. There's nine surrounding towns that depend on our aquifer, and we have to do everything we can do in our power to maintain that and keep it clean. Thank you.
It's interesting having two engineers here to explain this. Daniel Ryan, the Select Board is the appointing authority for the Earth Removal Committee.
Yes.
Do you agree with your opponent here about the danger of removing sand? And if so, what would you do as the appointing authority?
I would like to look at the earth removal in general. I mean, they're the committee, I understand, and I'm hearing, you know, there's been, there have been some issues with the earth removal and the management of that. So I think as, on the Select Board, we need to take a look at that and make sure that it's being managed properly. I don't want to impact, as we, we just talked about, like the cranberry growers' ability to use sand on their bogs and things like that, that, they need that. I mean, that's how they do their business and their farming. So I would be concerned about a moratorium, just, you know, stopping everything and not letting them do their, their job and what they need to do to, for their businesses and things like that. So the large operations, I mean, it sounds like that's what we really have to focus on, is the very large operations that potentially are impacting the aquifer. And then, I mean, as you pointed out too, all aquifer protection, I mean, it's not just that. We all, you know, we all need the drinking water, and we need it to be safe and, and clean for us. And there have been past issues in Carver, you know, way back about, like we have the North Carver landfill, I don't know if you're familiar with that whole story, and, and South Carver, and they've always concerned me because they are polluting and leeching into, to me, those are huge situations. I mean, you know, filtering is important of the aquifer, but I want to, you know, it's important to make sure that some of the other, you know, larger issues are, are addressed too.
Well, it comes to a question of mining versus incidental to building or incidental to breeding a bug. So how do you define that? It's difficult. In the bylaw, it's not really well defined.
Right, and that's what we need to do. We need to probably get the experts together that understand the soils and, and that, and help to work with us on that. I don't think that the, I don't know much about the people that are on the Earth Removal Committee. I'm not sure what kind of experience they have to that. But I would think it's important that we get the right people looking at it, and, you know, we're protecting, as we said, as best as we can, the aquifer.
Well, Dick Ward has a lot of experience with that.
Yeah.
And he's on the committee.
Good.
But he has experience from a growers' point of view.
Right, right. But the large operations, as you said, with the mining, that's, that's probably important for us to look at, to see what the impact is on the town of those operations. But again, the bogs, yeah, the moving, the cranberry bogs and moving the sand around, I think it's important that we allow them to continue to do that.
We've delved into some hot issues. You have some other questions?
Oh, absolutely. Got a ton of questions here. This is a two-part question, and this is where I like to find out where people stand on, I want you to define the job as a member of the Select Board. From years ago, looking at budgets and granting, you know, one-day liquor licenses, what do you think the role of a member of the board should be? Should you just be a neutral force looking at ideas? Are you an advocate? Tell me your idea, what you think, how you would define your role as a member of the Select Board. And then the second part of the question's going to be with some of the issues we've talked about. What is, if you have to run on one issue for this board, what is your issue? So let's start with Daniel Ryan. Tell me, please define the role of the Select Board as you see it, and what your main issue would be.
So we, I represent the citizens of Carver, and I need to listen to all the citizens of Carver, which I feel I've always done on all the boards that I've served on, and incorporate that information in the decisions that are made. Make sure that the decisions are well thought out, and we're following whatever appropriate bylaws that we, we need to follow when we're making those decisions. I bring process, you know, being an engineer, I mean, that's one of my backgrounds is process. I want to find out, you know, how, how does the Select Board effectively do its job in gathering information and making decisions? Because you can make, you know, you can have bad information presented to you, and then you make bad decisions. So you have to make sure that the information that, that comes your way is always sound so that you're making as good a decision as you can. Problem-solving abilities, I mean, in our, in the technical part that we do, we're always solving problems. So dealing with finding the solutions to the problems and working well with others and teaming is, is very important. And what was the other part of the question?
Oh, if you can have one issue that you're going to bring to this race, something that you want to tackle, we've talked about a couple of them, but in your opinion, what's the most important issue coming up in this next term for this board in Carver?
I'd like to see, I mean, a lot, everybody has good ideas, and I've talked to a lot of people on both sides of, you know, the, you know, some of the issues. And I think they just have to work together. And I guess the example of that is when we were faced with the, the building projects. They kept getting turned down at town meeting. People like absolutely were not raising taxes. And so they turned down, you know, the, the fire station project, they turned down the elementary school project, but it wasn't solving the problem. The issue was that we're looking at very high maintenance costs and repair costs on those buildings. They were getting old, and, and so we couldn't work together as a community. So I created my own committee, by the way, called the Town Building Study Committee. I went before the Selectman, I said, hey, I'm going to create an ad hoc committee. I want to study all the buildings in town. I want to try to figure out, is the need a real need? And it was. So I formed a committee, brought in, you know, some people that represented, you know, different aspects of the building projects. And we evaluated, we visited every single building in town, we put a whole report together, and we found that the need was, it was important. But what was going on at the time is nobody wanted to raise taxes. They didn't care. They said, yeah, we understand you need buildings, but we're not going to raise taxes for these buildings. So I went back and worked with the committee members and found a solution to put a capital building stabilization fund in place and find a funding source for that that allowed us to move forward without having to raise taxes for, for the fire station and the police station, which then enabled the, the school to move forward. And I met with a lot of citizens, and there was a lot of distrust in the town about, you know, what's it really going to cost me? Nobody can give me that number. So I worked very diligently with those people to, to come up with the, the numbers of what the increase would actually be. And I got consensus from everyone that allowed the elementary school project to finally go through, and then, then the raising of the funds for those two. So I think it's important to listen to everybody and work together and follow a process and bring everybody together on the table to, to solve these issues, because they're challenging. We have challenging issues, and we all need to work together, which is what I want to bring to the board, and, and listen to everybody in Carver and help to solve some of these issues.
Okay. Dan Farini, same question. How would you define the role, being a member of the Select Board in Carver, and what do you think the biggest issue will be going into the next term for whoever that person or persons may be on the board?
I would, it's, it's, to me, it's like a C E O, Chief Executive Office. Somebody who runs an organization should have leadership below them they can trust, they know what's going on. It should be a fair and open government. It should be where any person can come in and speak their mind. If they object to something, it should be heard. I've sat through many meetings over the last two years, and I've watched citizens come in myself. We've been stymied, we've been, not been able to talk. It's frustrating for people. I've seen where contractors or, or even earth removal people come in, ask for permits, they get brought up to the, get brought up to the desk, sit down, look at their plans, but somebody who has an objection has to stay back in the audience, has to yell their questions, are ignored, and that's not the way the government should be. That's not what it's all about. It is, any voice should be able to be heard throughout our town. Citizens should be able to, if they've got an issue, bring it up to all levels of town and be heard. Even though you don't agree with those people, you've listened to them, you listen to their point of view, and you may learn something new for that. As, one of the big issues, and I think would be in town, is one of those is bringing fair government back to the people. Listen to the people. Let them speak their mind, let them hear. One of the problems I have at the Select Board meeting, where you have 10 minutes to speak, open, for people to come in and address anything that may be coming forward that night. However, when that issue is brought up to speak, brought up to talk about, that individual is not allowed to speak again. For an example, I sat there with the battery people were there in front of the Select Board about something, oh, I'm sorry, about the planning board. We spoke before it. They get up and they speak, and they've given their justifications. Why? But there's no rebuttal, nobody's Nobody from the town is allowed to rebut or rebuke what's been said. So I think one of the things that needs to be done is that both parties have equal time at the same time. So we open it up. We make it a fair government. And that's one of the most difficult things because right now, our town is divided. It's them and us. And that's going to stop and it's going to come together for the best of our town.
Okay. Thank you. Charles?
Well, let's continue on that idea. I was going to go in another direction, but from time to time, as a younger reporter, I covered Carver and I covered Kingston. And Kingston periodically goes through a spasm of them and us. And it's a very difficult thing to balance. The public comment section of a public meeting can be fraught with all kinds of landmines. If there's a dialogue between the members of the public who are paying the bills and need to be involved and selectmen, it frequently gets out of hand. I've seen it happen years ago in Carver. I've seen it happen twice in Kingston. I think probably Plimpton is about the only town that is immune from that because, well, everyone feels like they're in the front piler and they just talk. How do you balance that? How do you have efficient government and maintain citizen participation? Let's start with Daniel Ryan.
So a lot of times, you know, there's, I guess, different kinds of meetings. There are some of the meetings where you're just doing regular business and it's not of interest to most people, and you're just working through the agenda. And I understand that, you know, you have to have an agenda, you have to get through the meeting and through all the topics. And then sometimes, as you said, it does, you know, you get people that are angry for some reason and they, and they want to bring a topic. And you're correct, I've seen meetings like that in the past where it's a difficult situation. But, and it's one-sided sometimes too, which makes it difficult to make decisions too. A lot of times, people will show up just on one side of the issue, and you want to hear from both sides on the board because you want to try to understand what's happening. So I know in some cases, we've had forums in the past. I think when I was working on the elementary school project, we would, you know, we were trying to figure out affordability in the taxes. And so we would have our own, like, forum meetings and invite the public to just come and dialogue about it and just try to understand what people needed for information and just work through those. So, you know, it is tough if you have a limited meeting and, you know, when you're meeting to spend two hours on a particular subject, you know, if you're trying to get through some town business. But, I mean, that's where we get to talk to people and say, well, how do we do this? You know, how do we, you know, do you want to have a separate meeting? You know, something that we just post for a particular topic? If it's of, you know, if everybody needs to participate in that and then make it so that, you know, if one particular citizen happens to show up to a meeting with a topic, well, it's great, you know, they're voicing an opinion, but you may want to talk to others too. So you want to open it up so that other people can come to the meeting and also voice their opinion. As we said, we want everyone to be able to participate and give us their opinion and help as part of the process.
Dan Farini, you raised the problem. How would you solve it?
One of the things I'd do, more likely, is give equal time to each group, even though you may designate that time for five minutes or three minutes, but it's equal time for, for example, for you to get up, speak your piece, and then somebody else to get up and speak their piece, pro and cons. What I see a lot is the people coming up for permits, solar, new buildings in town, and then there's townspeople who have questions, but they're not allowed to speak. And they should at least be given adequate time to either voice their concerns, let them be heard. Or, a lot of these are either pro of what's going on and may have suggestions. So I would like to see equal time between the two groups as best as we could do it. There are some committee meetings where I've gone in. The other thing is, our, all our meetings should be taped and broadcast so that everyone, it's an open policy, everyone gets to see that. That's one of the items that we're going to be petitioning for, that all our town meetings have been broadcast and be allowed to be seen by people. There are certain meeting sectors within town that refuse to have those either taped or broadcast, and I don't understand why because if it's an open meeting, it should be always public and it gives you a fair record of what has happened so everybody could see it and decide for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to switch topics here for a moment. One of the big issues during our last election cycle last year was about local police departments. And that seems, that issue seems to have calmed down a little bit or people seem to, it doesn't seem, we don't seem to be discussing it as much. What do you think about this movement that's been around to change policing, defund policing? Do you defend what happens in the town of Carver? Do you think things need to change? Are you happy with the way they are? Let's start with you, Dan Farini.
I remember Carver when I first came in. It was a quaint little town, still to me, a quaint little town, where we would have, if there was trouble at night, you would call the police department. There was a policeman on call who would come out and resolve the issue. I do not believe in defunding the police department. I think they're unneeded. I don't see any issues with our police department. They're open. I think the more we acknowledge them, the more we speak and communicate between the two groups, there should be no issue. I think, I'll be nice, but I think the people who want to defund the police don't really, really understand what they're asking for. Because when there's an issue, who do the first people they call? They call 911 and ask for the police. I have no objections with our police department. It's very well-run. It's been run like that for years, and I think we are lucky to have a police department that we do in Carver.
Thank you. Same question, Daniel Ryan.
And I agree. I mean, I would not defund. If anything, I'd make sure they have what they need to do, what they have to do. I mean, they're a very important part of our community and our safety, and so whatever's needed, I'll always work to help them out as part of, as I mentioned earlier. You know, I was behind the capital building stabilization fund that enabled them to be able to move forward with the police station to replace the headquarters that they had, which was in abysmal shape, you know? So even back when I was a selectman, I recall there was always issues with the buildings and, so I've always been there to help wherever I can. And, you know, I remember working with one of the officers on his computer system back a while ago. They needed some help, so I helped him, you know, to, for some items that he needed help on for a computer system he was bringing into town years ago. So I'm there to help whatever I can do.
Okay. Charles, any follow-up questions for here?
A follow-up is, I'm happy to hear that you're satisfied with Carver Police because years and years ago, it was not quite the case. So that's good news. But in general, what is it about Carver? I mean, you know, you're between Buzzards Bay and Cape Cod Bay, where people seem to want to live, and you two have lived here 40 and 50 years. What is it about Carver that you love? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Dan Farini.
Yes. When we moved into Carver 40 years ago, it was affordable. That's why we were here. We came in, it was going to be our starter home. It was going to be the start of town and then move on. We moved into town, we loved it. We had, we have and still have great neighbors. The town has got everything we need. We've got the forest. In the fall, now you have King Richard's Fair, you have Ediville Railroad, there's a lot of rural to do. There's open space. It was, it was what I would call Mayberry USA. We had one set of blinking lights in town. It was the quaint, and it still is a quaint little town, that I'd like it to stay. And that's one thing that I'd like to see is, even though it's growing, we need to keep that model of our town where it's the quaint, where we're not becoming a city. We stay a small little town the best we can. We have the resources that we have, we use them. It's, I'll say it's my little piece of paradise. Before I ran for this position, I sat with my wife, I just retired, and it was because of the battery farm, the sand mining, do I leave town? Do I move away? Or do I stay here and fight? And I said, I want to stay and fight for the town that I've made my home for the last 40 years. I'm going to stand up and do the best I can for this town. Thank you.
Daniel Ryan, why Carver? What is it?
I've always liked the rural charm of Carver. I learned to swim in the ponds of Carver. I learned to water ski in the ponds of Carver, and I hiked in the state forests, I biked all around. And so I went to the Governor John Carver when I was a youngster. I was a Boy Scout in town. I was an Eagle Scout when I was 14 in town. So I was, I was in the troops, you know, the Carver youth and participated in sports. So I've been a part of me, you know? Carver's always been a part of me growing up. And we're a great location, you know, convenient to get places. And, and I've always liked, you know, how it looks, you know, with the ponds and the bogs and the harvesting and, you know, Ediville. I grew up with Ediville as a, as a young boy, you know, being able to ride the train. And so there's always been a charm, you know? It's been a nice place to be for, and it's had a lot to offer, and I agree. You know, I was part of a master plan, you know, group years ago, and I don't, I haven't seen what's happened with our town master plan. So that's another thing I'd like to look at because you want to try to keep Carver, you know, as best as you can. There are a couple of things that are important that I don't know if people understand with the businesses, is that the taxes. So one of the ways to, which you see in other towns, is we have to kind of manage the, you know, the business blend in Carver. So we have to make sure we have good locations for businesses and we bring the appropriate businesses into town because it's that revenue that will help to minimize the, you know, the residential tax side that we need to work on. So I'm anxious to get back looking at the master plan and trying to see if we can, you know, bring more businesses, the right businesses into town that will help to make it, keep it affordable, an affordable town.
Okay. Let's go to our closing statements now. Let's, let's start with you this time, Daniel Ryan.
All right. So in closing, through, throughout my years at Carver, I volunteered my time and experience to always try to make Carver a better place. With my experience with working with others on town boards and committees and my work experience for leading problem-solving teams, leading process improvement teams and leading project teams, I feel I can help Carver on the Select Board. Everyone should have a voice in our future and everyone should work together to ensure Carver is a safe, healthy, and affordable community. We all need to continue to work together to make progress on issues and overcome challenges. Change is often hard. However, we need, we need to prepare as best as we can for our future and our children's future. What kind of town do we want Carver to become? Well, we need to work together to make sure Carver's a great place to live. Please vote on April 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Closing statement, please.
I've done everything in my effort to best support and fight for the current concerns of the people of Carver and try to save our small-town atmosphere. A place where honestly, honesty, integrity, and compassion are upheld as important personal quantities in our elected officials. A place where each and every one of us can raise our children in a safe environment without the threat of exposing the dangers of a battery farm, contaminated water, overcrowded schools. I want to bring these cornerstone of values back into our town government and be the voice of the people. I am running for Select Board to make a change. I want to bring back our basic rights, address our concerns, and find solutions that benefit the many, not the few. I ask for your support and your vote on April 22nd, 2023. And please come out to the town meeting tomorrow and vote. Be part of the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You've been listening to a political forum here. I'm Christine James from WATD. Charles Mathiason, also from WATD, in conjunction with Area 58 Cable, and the race is for the Board of Selectmen. There are two seats for a three-year term. The incumbent, James Hoffman, was not here tonight. We have Dan Farini and Daniel Ryan, two other folks who are running for this race. So remember, we always tell people at the end of these forums, get out and vote. If you don't vote, you don't have a voice. Thanks for watching.